Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last commissioner's meeting?
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only.
Joan Hoda, one at Scranton. With regard to item 24-0154, Neighbor Works and the First-Time Homebuyers Program, I think that's a good deal to assist low-income and medium-income first-time homebuyers. I have a question, and it may be in the backup, but I didn't see it. In the event someone's given funds for first-time homebuying, and for whatever reason, or for a reason that should not have happened, the bank has to foreclose, do we get a refund from that homebuyer? Does that money come back to the county?
Go ahead.
I think we can answer that when Kristin comes up.
Okay.
We agree the resolution.
Yeah.
She'll answer that question for you.
Okay. And with regard to 24-0162, the priority-based budgeting with Resource X Tyler Technologies. Personally, I've never been a fan of the use-it-or-lose-it school of budgeting, so I'd like to see this approach to budgeting where you have to justify the cost, show measurable benefits, okay, and identify immediate and long-term sources of funding. I think that's the way you should be. Think back 10 years. What was the priority or urgency with issues like gang violence, stormwater management, homelessness? The county's problems will change, and you need the flexibility to address them, especially within the budget. In the military, we had to do a thing called threat assessment. You identify the threat and identify what was required to meet it. And I'm hoping that this priority-based budgeting approach will do much of the same, so I'm glad to see that that's coming onboard. I could see Dave Folzoni's fingerprints all over this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board on agenda items only? Okay. Thank you. Resolution 24-0167.
This is approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 372-759-373284, inclusive totaling $2,846,446.52. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $5,675,223.4. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0167?
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0149.
This is entering into a memorandum of understanding with the AOPC. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, is hereby enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Administrative Office of the Pennsylvania Courts. On behalf of the Lackawanna County Drug Court and Mental Health Court, AOPC shall provide $52,840 to support the following specialty courts: Adult Drug Court, Adult Co-occurring Court, DUI Court, Mental Health Court, and Veterans Treatment Court. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here is the Treatment Court Coordinator, Mr. Gregory Betts.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Chief Jeffers said, this is an AOPC grant, six grants that we were approved for, for a total of $52,840 across our specialty courts for Treatment Court. You know, this money goes for things like food, toiletries, rental assistance, transportation for our participants. It also helps support employee training and travel for that training. The grant begins April, the six grants begin April 1st, roughly to April 1st, and then go to March 31st of 2025.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0149?
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0150.
This is ratifying and accepting the Economic Development and Community Development Initiatives Program Grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, is hereby ratify and authorize the acceptance of a grant from the Commonwealth Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the Economic Development and Community Development Initiatives Program. Whereas the overall goal of the proposed EDCDI grant is to provide targeted education related to the dangers of youth gaining activity in our local schools and implement the CODI Pathfinder Record Management System to support effective communication, data collection, and evidence and record management by the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office Detective Division. Now therefore be resolved, the Lackawanna County Commissioners do hereby authorize the Lackawanna County District Attorney to accept, sign, and authorize all documents related to this grant award, and the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, is hereby approve the acceptance of the EDCDI program grant in the amount of $100,000. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the DA's Grant Administrative Manager, Mr. Edward Bodiker.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll make it brief. This grant was applied for and secured by Senator Marty Flynn's office, and then I ask as a representative of the DA's office that you vote to accept.
Can you just talk about the grant and fill the public in on, you know, what it's going to accomplish?
Certainly. It's one of the many grants that our offices are applying for. In this case particularly, partially, the money, about a third of it, is going to go to assisting the school districts with education, helping the students at a younger age hopefully learn the dangers of gang-related activity and membership. And the other two-thirds is going to go to a newer software records management system that the current one is now being phased out, antiquated, and no longer supported by the company that created it. So there are other agencies within the county, police agencies, that are going onboard with this CODI software, and it's only right that the District Attorney's Office Detective Division also stay with that.
That's great. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0150?
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0151.
Entering into an audit engagement letter. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, is hereby approve and the audit of the financial statements of the Lackawanna County Retirement Fund for the year ending December 31, 2023, after receiving a recommendation of the Pension Board to Joe M. Alouin Associates, PC, 321 Biden Street, Scranton, for a cost not to exceed $11,600. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, or Commissioners, here's our Human Resources Pension Administrator, Ms. Terri Sealy.
Good morning. Hi, we're requesting to enter into an agreement for the 2023 pension audit with Joseph Alouin Associates. This request was approved at this morning's pension meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0151?
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0152.
This is awarding the Safe Streets for All Comprehensive Action Plan. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, does hereby award the Safe Streets and Roads for All Comprehensive Safety Action Plan to Baumann Consulting Group, LTTD, 840 West Hamilton Street, Allentown, Pennsylvania, at a cost not to exceed $224,330. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristin Magnotta.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. As the chief said, this is the Safe Streets for All consultant that we have chosen, Baumann Limited, from Allentown. This is Safe Streets for All Action Plan is what we're looking to put together, and this is a United States Department of Transportation-approved plan, and this allows both Lackawanna County and its municipalities to go into the IIJA, which is the Bipartisan Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act, for other future funding to help with high-impacted biker, pedestrian, and traffic and accident areas, both high-incident areas and near-incident areas. And, you know, we would work with PennDOT on all of this, but this plan would allow us and municipalities to be able to go in for later funds to help, you know, mitigate those areas that would be high-impact or near-high-impact areas.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Magnotta? Okay. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0152?
Motion.
Second. On the question, on the question, I really like this project. I think it's a concerted effort to make the streets and our transportation in the county safe. As Director Magnotta said, we're going to look at different, or this company's going to look at different issues or aspects of safe roads and streets, such as transit availability, pedestrian and bicycle connectivity, intersection safety, design needs, also taking a look at crash trends throughout the county, and that's going to directly impact any recommendations for future projects in Lackawanna County, future policies and programs. And as Director Magnotta stated, it's going to highlight the need for a systemic approach to safety and widespread use of proven safety countermeasures. So I think it's a great project. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0153.
This is approving the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program applications, whereas the Board of Commissioners has established the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program, and the Board of Commissioners are interested in assisting local communities, organizations, and agencies in the revitalization of neighborhoods, since they are the foundation for families and community values. And whereas the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program has been allocated monies from the Lackawanna County Economic Development Initiative to be made available to county municipalities, municipal authorities, and tax-exempt charitable and educational organizations. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents related to these grants, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, is hereby allocate funding from the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program to the following applicants for $5,000 each pertaining to City Carbonell's foyer renovation project, Westside Little League's maintenance equipment replacement, the Dunmore Missy League's indoor installation of an abating cage area and fenced enclosure, the Ebbingdon Area Girls Softball League, field tarps, wraps, and bleachers, St. Stephen's Boosters Club, hall modernization and upgrades, the Benton Athletic Association's new roof and reciting for dugouts in the press blocks, the American Legion Post 665 in Dixon City, demolishing the existing building and creating a space for a parking lot, Elephant Burrow Train Station Rehabilitation Project, Meredith Hose Company, number one in Carbonell Township, Train Station Rehabilitation Project, Italian-American Club of Elephant, installation of two ductless air units, Christie Matheson, ASA Dalton, improvements to the first responder field, Greenfield Township Supervisors, the Veterans Memorial Enhancement, American Legion Riders Post 328 in Archibald, the Trailer Project, H. McAndrew, American Legion Post 869 in Archibald Kitchen Renovations, Way Crossings Fire Company in Carbonell Township Fire Station Upgrades, the Outreach Center for Community Resources in Scranton, improvements to the Outreach Seventh Avenue Center, Eagle Hose Company, number one in Dixon City, upgraded personal protective equipment, Youth Arts Coalition Scranton, purchasing of tables, chairs, and music stands, the Shoppa Davy, Veterans for Foreign Wars in Blakely, Canteen Air Conditioner Repairs, and finally, the West Scranton Wrestling Alumni Association, Youth Fitness Room Equipment. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director Magnotta.
Thank you. The Community Reinvestment Program is a planning and economic development program that is specifically to nonprofit organization, 501(c)(3)'s. This benefits not only nonprofits and social services, but also VFWs, social club and recreational clubs, as well as volunteer fire companies, as you see by the awards. We award this twice a year, so there are two times to go and apply for this money. Once you get it in a year, you must reapply, wait to reapply for the following year, so we have many applicants throughout the entire county that have gotten this award many times and have actually saved the money over a period of time to be able to do bigger projects, which is really great for nonprofit organizations. This is, to be fully clear, this is a reimbursement program, so the money must be spent in order for these individuals and these organizations to receive the 500, I'm sorry, $5,000. So, but again, the next, in the next round, will close in October and is open as of immediately. And just to be clear on some of the information on the uses, it's to acquire and preserve open space resources, acquire and construct greenways and trails, acquire, develop, or rehab outdoor recreational facilities, improve or revitalize community services, infrastructure, and/or the quality of life. So many of these projects, also, you will see that they will have what we call capital stacks, so they will have money from other entities to go along to make sure that these projects come to fruition. But again, this is a reimbursement program.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Magnotta? Okay. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0153?
Motion.
On the question?
On the question, I think I've said it before in a past meeting, but I really do love this program and the work that we've been able to do with it thus far. As you know, a lot of these places don't really know where else to go, they don't have anywhere else to go, so without this, these projects, these upgrades, may never happen. So for us to be able to lend a helping hand, that's what community is all about. So, thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0154.
Entering into an agreement with Neighbor Works. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, is hereby enter into a grant agreement with Neighbor Works of Northeastern Pennsylvania, 815 Smith Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504. The county intends to continue its first-time homebuyers program to assist individuals and families in Lackawanna County in preserving and achieving home ownership by providing down payment subsidies and closing costs subsidies by utilizing funding in the amount of $129,375 made available by the Lackawanna County Affordable Housing Act 137 program. Neighbor Works will undertake the administration of the first-time homebuyers program. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. I believe that Joan's question for Director Magnotta was, if the House is, you know, forfeited back to the bank, do we get a refund from those funds?
Thank you. I'm happy to answer that question. I'm certainly still learning about this program, so I don't know clearly the answer to that, but on our behalf, we could, and I could look into the answer immediately after this to see if Neighbor Works on our behalf would recoup those funds in the amount of $7,500.
I'll see Joan on the alley afterwards.
Sure will. And if I could just talk a little bit about the program, I just wanted to say that, you know, this is a formality. This program has been going on for a number of years. This is a yearly agreement with the Neighbor Works. They do tremendous work using the Act 137 funds for the first-time homebuyers, and this is, you know, no cost at all to the general fund, which is what I just wanted to make clear. So it's no cost at all. This comes from Act 137 funds, no cost to the general fund. But I will get the answer to that question.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Magnotta on this resolution? Okay. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0154?
Motion.
Second. On the question, on the question, I just want to briefly say that I agree with you. This is an outstanding program. Neighbor Works does a great job. When I worked for the city of Scranton years ago, I worked in the first-time homebuyers program, so I worked with families who were going through this process, and when I saw this on the agenda, I just had flashbacks of how meaningful this is when a young family is trying to buy a home, at that time in the city of Scranton, with this anywhere in the county, and they need just that little extra help, whether it's with the closing cost, the down payment. So this program, it's a great investment in the people of the county, so I think it's great. Anyone else? All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0155.
This is authorizing the acceptance of an RCAP grant on behalf of the Carbonell Development Partners Phase III Project, whereas the Carbonell Development Partners Phase III Project is to construct a new single-story medical and commercial building at 40 North Church Street, Carbonell, Pennsylvania, and whereas the county of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, funds as a source to finance the project, and whereas the Carbonell Development Partners has proposed that Lackawanna County assist in this Phase III construction project in obtaining and administering funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project, and the county desires to assist the Phase III construction project. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents, except any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, and that the county Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to accept an award in the amount of $1 million from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant on behalf of the Carbonell Development Partners Phase III Construction Project. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director Magnotta.
Still here. So this is for, as the chief said, this is Carbonell Development Partners for an RCAP for them and for our office, the Office of Econo, Planning and Economic Development, to administer this grant. The reason for being that, as you know, grants are quite labor-intensive with not only the administration of them, but the reporting that follows afterward. So on behalf of the city of Carbonell, they had asked us to actually administer, as they don't have the resources to be able to do so, so we would be administering this on the city of Carbonell's behalf. This is for a new single-story commercial medical building on Church Street. It's Phase III, so it's the construction portion of the project, which is wonderful for the city of Carbonell, and we would have a 1% administration fee for administering this. It would not be part of the actual amount of $1 million of the grant. We receive that from the city in a separate agreement that we do with them.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Director Magnotta? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0155?
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0156.
This is ratifying the submission of a Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program Grant, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, is hereby ratify the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Gateways, Trails, and Recreation Grant Program on behalf of the Dunmore Missy League Field Lighting Project to assist with the construction and lighting of Field Number Two at Sherwood Park, Pennsylvania, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $219,872. And be it further resolved, the Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents, except any awards, if approved, related to this Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Grant Program. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director Magnotta.
This is Act III, Greenway, Trails, and Recreation Program through Pennsylvania DCD. The request came in to us through one of our state representatives, Kyle Mullins, for us to help in administering this grant. What we would, what this would be used for is the lighting of the second field for the Dunmore Missy League at Sherwood Park. So this grant is not awarded. We would, we are submitting on their behalf, but this action today would ratify the submission. And for this, we would receive a 2% administration fee for this submission and administration.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Director Magnotta on this resolution? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0156.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0157.
Entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Elephant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with Borough of Elephant for the Elephant Borough, Jackson Street Water and Sewer Line Phase II. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna is hereby award the following Community Development Block Grant Construction Contract for the Borough of Elephant II, Stefurski Paving Company, Three Export Lane, Archibald, Pennsylvania, the lowest, most responsible, and qualified bidder for $308,866 and no cents. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director Magnotta.
This is part of the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is a wonderful program that helps get projects completed to both entitlement and non-entitlement communities throughout, municipalities throughout Lackawanna County. This project, as was stated, would be for a much-needed stormwater improvement project in Elephant, and in the amount of $308,766. And this is time-sensitive because we would like this project to be completed by November of 2024 to hit our CDBG timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Magnotta? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0157.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0158.
Entering into a memorandum with the Scranton Chamber of Commerce. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a memorandum with the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce to establish a collaborative partnership between the two to effectively manage business development, marketing, and lead management within Lackawanna County to commence July 1, 2024, and expire June 30, 2026. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. This is Director Magnotta's last resolution.
Well, first off, I wanted to thank all three of you Commissioners for last week's event with the Chamber of Commerce. This partnership is very meaningful and impactful with the Chamber of Commerce, to the entire county, and specifically to our department. Across the county, there's many entities that do a lot of the same work. We all receive leads for current businesses that need help or are expanding, new businesses looking at our area, workforce needs, and we tend to work in a vacuum separately. So this allows us to all work together and collaboratively and utilize resources and really save a lot of resources working collaboratively. This partnership is, at this time, just this partnership is no cost to the county at all. In a later meeting, we will do a, an agreement for both of the programs that we had announced at the press conference last week, that we will use American Rescue Plan funds for two different incubator projects, which are really wonderful, especially since COVID, for people to have the opportunity to be retrained in the workforce, and also for there to be an opportunity for entrepreneurs to get some backing and funding and support for their startup businesses is really, really important now, probably more than ever. So this partnership is on so many levels, both workforce, entrepreneurship, small business development, and retention and attraction of businesses to Lackawanna County is unbelievably important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for, thanks for all your work on this as well. Any questions for Director Magnotta? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0158.
Motion.
Second. On the question?
On the question, you know, Kristin, you said it perfectly. It's, this partnership ensures that county government and the business community work hand-in-hand to create job and business opportunities. It's being able to collaborate to promote economic growth and help improve the quality of life for county residents. So really proud to say that this partnership marks a significant step forward for our community and what is, as we know, a very bright, bright future here in Lackawanna County.
I agree. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution 24-0159.
Entering into an agreement with the Crayer Detective Agency. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, is hereby award Security Guard Services for the Workforce Development Board to Crayer Detective Agency Incorporated, 107 North Apple Street, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, 18512, to commence July 1. Apple Street, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, 18512, to commence July 1, 2024, and expire June 30, 2027. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is Executive Director of the Workforce Development Board, Ms. Virginia Toronto.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. This agreement will allow us to provide security services to keep our staff and customers and the general public safe at the PA Career Link Lackawanna County, located at 135 Franklin Avenue, for the next three-year period beginning July 1. It was procured through a formal RFP process, subsequently approved by the Workforce Development Board, and all costs will be paid for by the partner agencies at the PA Career Link with no cost to the county.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Toronto? Okay. Excuse me, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0159.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0160.
Entering into an agreement with Educational Data Systems, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award Workforce Development Board's Provision of Payroll Services for the Temporary Assistance for Nene Families Grant, known as the TANF Grant, to the Educational Data Systems Incorporated, 15300 Commerce Drive North, Dearborn, Michigan, to commence June 19, 2024, and expire March 21, 2025. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Toronto.
This agreement will allow the Workforce Development Board to contract with EDSI to serve as a conduit for the payment of wages and applicable fringe benefits to approximately 50 to 60 youngsters and young adults ages 14 to 24 throughout the summer months and through next year up till March 31. We put these youngsters out during the summer months and work experience on crews. Very happy to report that we will have a crew at the Lackawanna Heritage Trail, a crew at McDade Park, and one at Naug Park doing cleanup work and helping to keep the area safe and nice for the public. We also place interns in their course of study across the county, mostly in private business and industry, to give them some experience in their fields. We've been doing this project for a number of years, and this agreement just allows us to have a way to pay their wages and fringes.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Toronto? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0160.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution 24-0161.
Accepting a proposal for a single-point paying agent. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal from Fidelity Bank to act as the single-point paying agent for the county's debt service restructuring. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the county's Chief Financial Officer, Mr. David Bolzoni.
Good morning, Commissioners. The single-point paying agent concept is an effort to create a perception of portfolio de-risking for all of the county's debt service. We're aware of the county's strengths in meeting its obligations. The county has never defaulted on a debt service payment, but we want to impress upon investors in county debt that our responsibilities are of primary importance, and this is particularly important with the downgrade to county debt. We are unique in the Commonwealth in that we can employ this concept because of the single tax office. The tax office is unique because of its assignment to a class-two A city, of which Scranton is alone in that category. Following the dedication of real estate taxes for the debt service requirements, the tax office will be instructed to remit directly to a trustee, in this case, it would be Fidelity Bank, revenues from that levy exclusively for our debt service. The trustee will make the debt service payments on behalf of the county. No influence on how funds are used within the context of the general fund would occur. Presently, the county isolates millage for debt service within the general fund budget, but it's not dedicated as a specific part of the overall levy. Costs for the service are very reasonable. The annual fee is $18,500, with a one-time setup fee of $12,000.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni on this resolution? Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0161.
Motion.
On the question?
Yeah, on the question. Dave, this procedure shows that we're very serious about our rating, and, you know, it's a big step in the restoration of the county's credit rating. Cost is manageable, you know, and this, you know, I believe this is a very positive in the process towards stability, beginning with the 2025 budget.
Agreed. It's a step, but it's an important step. Obviously, the debt service obligations are extremely important to investors. We certainly know that Pennsylvania law puts a lot of strength behind local government debt. That we're all aware of. Investors are aware of that as well. This eliminates, as I pointed out, the perception of risk, since we will now use a trustee exclusively for the management of our debt service payments.
Thank you. On the question, I think it should be clear to people by now that since January, we are taking step by step by step to implement a plan to restore a level of financial stability here in Lackawanna County. So as Mr. Bolzoni stated, this action will ensure that money due for debt service obligations, instead of going into the general fund, it goes to a trustee. The money from the trust will then go directly to pay off debt service. So this, over time, just as we saw when this occurred in the City of Scranton, this will help the county restore its credit rating and improve its overall finances, which we are in desperate need. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, I'm sorry, all those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0162.
Entering into an amendment with Tyler Technology, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an amendment with Tyler Technologies Incorporated for priority-based budgeting software. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Mr. Bolzoni.
Before I offer my comments, maybe we can get an introduction to priority-based budgeting from Chris Fabian. Chris works for Resource X. He really is the individual who created priority-based budgeting for Resource X, which is now part of Tyler Technologies. As the commissioners are aware, we received a very detailed presentation at a work session several weeks ago that provided a very informative introduction to the concept of priority-based budgeting. We had asked Chris back to provide some discussion publicly on the use of priority-based budgeting, and Chris, what I would suggest is, since you gave us the one-hour presentation at the work session, it would probably be helpful, in this case, if you provided an overview of priority-based budgeting, and how you believe it will benefit Lackawanna County based on its use by some of your other local government customers, and you'll get a gold star for brevity, Chris.
That sounds great. Can, David, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you, David. Thank you, county commissioners, and thank you to the residents of Lackawanna County for allowing me to join you today. I will go for the gold star of brevity here, but I really would enjoy the opportunity to present on priority-based budgeting, and exactly why we created it, and why we think it's going to be of such great benefit to Lackawanna County. As David mentioned, we created this approach to budgeting. I came from county government, and the idea that we need to understand where our resources are being invested, not only by line item in the budget, which is what we're familiar with, and not only by department, but most importantly, by outcome, by the results that we are funding for our community. And that was the impetus, as I served my own Board of County Commissioners over 10 years ago. Since then, we have implemented priority-based budgeting in over 300 local governments across the United States and Canada, including many county governments, and furthermore, within the state of Pennsylvania. Priority-based budgeting has become a best practice, as espoused by the Government Finance Officers Association, which represents budget and finance directors. Here is a chapter from their recent book on financial foundations for thriving communities. As another county government used priority-based budgeting to reconsider where resources are being invested in order to free up and reallocate within their current budget nearly 15% of their budget. And that is part of the hallmark of the use case of priority-based budgeting overall. This graphic is a blueprint on the budget that Washington County, Wisconsin, among other county organizations use as we think about what we're trying to do in priority-based budgeting. When I was in county government, over on the left-hand side of this chart, we had new needs, whether it was just simply paying for the increased cost from inflation, or new programs and services, as we've heard about on today's agenda, that require positive investment. We wanted to ensure that they were always measured and in alignment with your priorities. And in order to fund those new needs, so to speak, in addition to just our base services, we wanted to have a rigorous evaluation of our current budget to understand, how could we do things differently? Might we have some opportunities to partner differently in the community, to change service levels, or to even bring in new revenues in order to free up resources and generate new revenue to fund our new needs overall. As county governments and city governments have gone through priority-based budgeting, the hallmark of success, we've seen local government be able to free up and reallocate up to and greater than 10% of their budget, and we think that is significant and substantial, and that comes by way of understanding every program that we provide throughout the local government, how much those programs cost. So we'll do a full allocation of personnel and non-personnel costs to the programs that you provide. We score the programs relative to community priorities, but also within county government. We know it's imperative to understand degree of mandate, whether or not you have partners in the community, so degree of reliance, population served, in addition to overall impact on the county priorities. And as we get there, and this is, David, where I'll begin to wrap it up, we can start to understand, what about those programs that are high impact, that we need to really consider where we can continue to invest in those programs that are providing us a substantial return, a societal return on performance and on outcomes, and what about programs that might be less aligned, or are not mandated, or they're not paying for themselves, and what opportunities do we have there to think about freeing up and reallocating resources? And that's where I wanted to land on the presentation. Our approach and our model would be to work collaboratively with you all and the departments to truly understand what businesses are you in, what programs do you provide, how much do those programs cost. We have a methodology, which we will execute, to bring back program costs and program revenue, and ultimately be right there with you in order to provide specific recommendations. That's what you're seeing here for a presentation I'm making in just two days for another county government, where we are going to delineate and document every program that you offer, and what your opportunities entail, in order to be truly resourceful, and know where you can free up resources in order to fund a great future for the county. My final slide, and I'll turn it back over to you, David, and to the board, is that we never depart from the line items. We have to budget at the line item level and hold those sacred. What we are doing is installing a program level of understanding, not only what line items are we funding, but what programs are we actually funding with those line items overall, and then what is everything that we want to know on a standard basis about those particular programs? How much do they cost? Are they mandated? Do they serve the entirety of their population? Do they pay for themselves? And ultimately, what's their impact on the strategic priorities of the county, in order to make this transition from line item budgeting purely to program and priority-based budgeting, to understand where your resources are going. So I would be happy to entertain any questions. I know we did have the time together for a deeper dive into the presentation, but hopefully that gives you a taste of why we're so excited about the opportunity to work together.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Fabian? Okay, I thought that was a great presentation. Thank you very much. Dave, do you want to continue?
Okay, thank you, Chris. I'd also like to thank Felicia St. Clair and Eric Jordan for helping us to put this together. Some challenges, of course, but a very good presentation. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Relative to priority-based budgeting, priority-based budgeting is a method to add strength to the county budgeting process, which, as we're certainly aware from the work session discussion, has its weaknesses. It's a departure from the traditional zero-based budgeting approach, which uses historical information to create the annual budget. Priority-based budgeting focuses on priorities in the delivery of services and the amount of revenue to meet the delivery of those services. It enables the county to focus on not only the cost, but the value of the service and its place within the budget, as Chris pointed out. With priority-based budgeting, we do not expect a distinct transition entirely away from the existing process, at least immediately, but more as a complementary addition to the process for comparison and context. In addition to the analytic part of the process, we also have Tyler representatives, particularly Chris, and also Ryan Lucia, supporting the county and the process in what is termed the Priority-Based Budgeting Director, which I think is an important concept to remember. It's not just the implementation of the service, it's being able to assist with its execution. That's very important. The director assists in interpreting the analysis and in implementing its recommendations. The program will be in addition to the existing Tyler Technology software contract with the county, adding the $100,000 annual cost of the program to the remaining year of the existing contract. The conclusion of that contract in mid-2025 will enable the county to revisit and assess the value of the program and its present and future impact.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0162.
Motion.
On the question? On the question, I have a few things to say. Number one, as you can see by the presentation this morning and by Mr. Bolzoni's comments, this is another effort, just like the single-point paying agent and other measures that we've taken since January by Commissioner McGloin and I, of thinking outside of the box. What we're really trying to do here is professionalize county government, and to take a much more analytical approach to our budget process, rather than really just grab-bagging every year and trying to rob Peter to pay Paul. One of the unfortunate things that any new commissioner, whether it's here in Lackawanna County, or across the state, or really across the country, one of the issues that they face is that when they take over the behemoth that is county government, the mentality usually is, this is the way that things have always been done, therefore, this must be the way. And we know that this is a very dangerous way of thinking, especially when you're dealing with taxpayer money. And that is why today, in a few seconds, we'll be voting to get a completely different perspective on how the county spends taxpayer dollars, and how our annual budget is constructed, with the goal of saving the taxpayers of Lackawanna County as much money as we can. As I was listening to the presentation and listening to Mr. Bolzoni, I could only think about how this fits in with the measures that we've already taken. I'll take you back to January, when we were faced with an unbelievable financial crisis, and we're still faced with that. We didn't just sit there and wait around for something to happen. We immediately worked with the state, worked with the Department of Community and Economic Development, and we entered into the Strategic Management Planning Program. We're working now with a team of financial professionals who is going to help us chart a path forward, not just for the next month, or the next six months, but for the next five years, so that not only the commissioners, but everyone in this county has a good understanding of how we're going to turn this completely around. of how we're going to turn this completely around. Lackawanna County is in absolutely no position, no position, to continue on the way it has been over the last few years. We must use every single available tool to put ourselves in a stronger position financially. This program, based on the results that Mr. Fabian and Mr. Bolzoni pointed out across the state, this program is going to pay, hopefully is going to pay for itself over time. We have employed a zero-based budgeting process over the last number of years. This is a priority-based budgeting process. It doesn't mean we're going to completely abandon what we're doing now. We're just going to try to look at things a different way, to see if we can come up with different results. Because as I said, the definition of insanity is to just continue to do things the same way over and over and over and over again, and then we're sitting here at this budget cycle and the next budget cycle, and we're just giving you the same product. So between this PFM digital budget book, I hope that the people of Lackawanna County understand that you're going to be getting a much more professional product and a much more professional county government. Anyone else on the question?
Just real quick.
Go ahead, Matt.
No, go ahead, Chris, if you have something.
I agree with what Billy is saying. You know, there's been a lot of initiatives put into place, look at our finances, look at our budget, but they all come at a cost. And that's the concerning part to me. You know, we are in desperate times financially, and every time we implement something, there's major cost to it. My hope is that when these reports come out and these, once we get the answers to some of these questions, that there's going to be some ability for the county to save money. You know, but we're in month six already, and we haven't saved a penny since we walked in this door. So, you know, my main concern right now is paying for all these initiatives without making any sacrifices here at all, which is, at the end, is just going to cost the taxpayers' money. I mean, I still don't see any way around a major, major tax increase, which, again, I say, I said every media, I'm not going to support that until we look at major, major cost-cutting initiatives and cost savings. I just bring this down to a household budget. When you're at your wits' end financially and you can't afford anything, you got to make cuts, or you got to get three more jobs. You got to bring more revenue in. I know we're trying to bring revenue in, but that takes an extremely long time to do. But my priority always has been for the past five years, going on five years, is cost-cutting. And we have yet to do that. So I hope that this will show where cost-cutting can be implemented, and we stick to it and do it.
I just, I just want to add one thing. I respectfully disagree with my colleague, Commissioner Shermack, on one point. I just want to make sure everyone understands, what he just said is not true, the fact that we've been here six months and we haven't saved a penny. We were paying, we're going to pay upwards of $4 million for the County Department of Health, and we reallocated those resources, and in effect, we're going to save a few million dollars a year on that effort. And that is one of the major things that stuck out on day one here. So, you know, the, his comment, I respectfully disagree with, that we haven't done anything to save money. That is, that is completely false. One of the first things we did was to analyze the County Department of Health, which was sucking up county funds every single day, and Mr. Bolzoni can attest to that. So we've shedded ourselves of that, reallocated those resources, and in effect, we saved a lot of money.
Yeah. Real quick, Commissioner Gahin. So I'll just briefly recap the previous three budgets in which Commissioner Gahin was, or Commissioner Shermack was obviously here for. The 2022 budget gap was bridged by using the fund balance. The preliminary budget deficit in 2023 was funded exclusively through one-time revenues and organic adjustments. And the 2024 budget employed a limited real estate tax increase, which we know Commissioner Shermack did not vote for, but also organic savings and significant one-time revenues. So David, am I wrong when I say if you continue down that path, it is not sustainable to continue to operate that way?
That would be a correct statement.
So what we need at this point in time is an impactful solution to the current budgeting process to create fiscal stability. And this is something that I believe can really get the results that we need moving forward.
And I just want to add one thing, and I think you'd agree with me. We're not sitting up here saying that this is a panacea, that voting on this today is going to solve all the, we have severe financial problems. So by voting for this today, we're not saying that that's going to solve everything. It's a different way of doing things. It's a different way of looking at things. Because if we continue down this road of just doing the same thing over and over again, we're just going to be in the same spot. So this, we're taking a completely different approach to county government, and I think we're professionalizing it, which I think is sorely, sorely needed.
Gentlemen, if I, if I could add, statistically, as we discussed during the work session, from 2016 to 2024, the expenditures increased within the budget process by 63%. During that same period of time, assessed valuation increased by 12.04%. And as you're well aware, assessed valuation drives real estate tax collections, drives the ability to execute a budget. I think those two percentages stand out in very stark contrast and certainly point out to the need to try different approaches. We fully expect that the program will pay for itself, and that discussion has occurred at the work sessions, and certainly it's been presented previously.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Resolution 24-0163.
Approving the OYFS provider agreements, be it resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Provider Agreements for the fiscal year 24 through 25 with the following: Adoption Connection, Blue Ridge Eating Disorder Treatment Facility, Children's Service Center of Wyoming Valley, Clock Tower Schools, Cornellabraxis Group, Diakon Child Family and Community Ministries, Diversified Treatment Alternative Centers, Drug and Alcohol Rehabilitation Services, George Junior Republic of Pennsylvania Kids Peace and National Centers, Lighthouse Family Youth Agency, LaLoftis, Brigatti and Associates, the Mary Kay Pennsylvania, Outside and School of Experimental Education, the Presley Ridge, Turning Points for Children, United Neighborhood Centers, and the Valley Youth House. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to talk to you about that is our Human Services Assistant Administrator, Ms. Carrie Browning.
Good morning. Obviously, that's a long list of contracts of people that provide services for us. Many of them are foster care and residential provider contracts. They're all annual renewals. We need those to maintain placement options for children that have to go in out-of-home placement in the county. And the rate that we are charged is determined by the needs of each child going into that. Foster care is reimbursed by 80% by the state, and the residential reimbursement rate is 60%. The other half of those are annual renewal contracts for providers for delinquent children that offer residential and drug and alcohol therapy. Again, that rate depends on the service that is needed by the individual child, and these services are reimbursed at a rate of 60 to 80% by the state.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0163.
Motion.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0164.
Approving OYFS professional service agreements, be it resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreements for fiscal year 24 through 25 with the following: Casa of Lackawanna, the Catherine McCauley Center, Center for the Health and Human Services Research in Action, Cesar Reyes, Mateo Interpreting Services, Children's Advocacy Center, Info Matrix, Thomas N. M. Maldoney, and Northern Tier Research. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Admin Browning.
Hi. Okay. These are also all annual renewals. The professional contracts are reimbursed at 80% by the state. So if the providers were to bill the maximum amount of all of that, the county share would be $124,100.
Thank you. Any questions on this? All those, or I'm sorry. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0164?
Motion.
There's been a motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0165.
Approving a letter of intent, be it resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Letter of Intent with the Court of Common Pleas for reimbursement of administrative costs of independent legal representation. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Ms. Browning.
Hi. Okay. This is a new Office of Youth and Family Services Letter of Intent for Title IV reimbursement of administrative costs of independent legal representation of children, youth, and parents in legal proceedings within Lackawanna County Court of Common Pleas. AOPC has determined that it is a conflict of interest for OYFS to pay the parent attorneys directly. So switching to the Court of Common Pleas paying for the attorneys directly, the county will be able to obtain 50% reimbursement from the state. It's 100% county dollars if OYFS pays directly and it is a conflict. So the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services requires a letter of intent to complete, complete it in order for this to switch in payment to occur and draw down the IV funding.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Okay. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0165?
Motion.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0166.
Approving the OYFS provider agreement, be it resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Provider Agreements for fiscal year 23 through 24 with Blue Ridge Eating Disorder Treatment Facility LLC. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Ms. Browning.
This is a new provider contract that is needed for a child in our custody to receive eating disorder treatment services. There are very limited amount of providers that offer this, and so this service is reimbursed 60% by the state.
Any questions? May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0166?
Motion.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0168.
Approving a family services agreement, be it resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the family services agreement for the Office of Youth and Family Services to contract with individuals who are certified in child welfare casework in Pennsylvania. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 18, 2024. Finally, once again, here is Ms. Browning.
Okay. This is the family services agreement that we will be sending out to the certified child welfare workers across the state. And the do-not-exceed amount is $35 per hour plus meals and hotels. There are approximately 14 individuals right now interested in doing this work. 80% of the cost will be reimbursed by Act 148 funding at the state level, and 20% is the county share. This is really important to our office for people to come in and help us with our backlog.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0168.
Motion.
On the question?
Just real quick on the question. Carrie, this is fantastic, and, you know, obviously, you know, the workers that we have in that department have done a wonderful job of, you know, continuing to be there each and every day. And, you know, something like this, as we all know, can be extremely, extremely helpful and helping everybody there get caught up on that backlog and move towards compliance. So, so thank you, and thanks for all that you've done over the past six months or so.
Sure.
And obviously, prior to that, before I was even here.
Yeah.
But, but thank you.
It's, it's the, it's the people in the office that are really doing it out there every day. So I will share that with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We, as you know, and everyone knows, we inherited an agency in OYFS that I would say was at a low point six months ago. We have taken several steps, which have been well documented, to try to turn things around, one which we'll be voting on in a few seconds here. Essentially, what we're doing is calling an all-hands-on-deck approach to hire part-time child welfare workers from across the state to assist the agency with the current backlog, which, as of yesterday, was 967 cases. So until we clear this backlog, it's almost going to be impossible to do the other things necessary to get the, to restore the license, because we're on a provisional license. So unless we cure the backlog, everything else that we're doing really is for naught. So this move today is going to help the agency get caught up on the backlog. I'm thrilled that there's people who are interested in coming in and assisting. It's going to help us move towards compliance. And the other thing that I'm also really proud to report is that in January, the Office of Youth and Family Services had 23 caseworkers. And because of our leadership and with the help of many other people in this building and in the agency, we now have, I believe, 40 caseworkers total. I think there's three, or two on his desk that have to be signed. So, and that's really because of the efforts of a lot of people. We try to do some different things with civil service, but we're making a concerted effort to go out and hire caseworkers. And over the last six months, it has worked. And now we're, we're not in the best position, but we're in a much better position than we were six months ago. So it's a huge improvement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we start into public comment, Kristin Magna, I got the answer for Joan.
Oh, sure.
Approached of the podium.
Yeah, sure.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity. Joan, thank you so much for the question about our agreement with NeighborWorks. I didn't want, I wanted to make sure I had accurate information on the number of years. The good news is, we've never had a situation before where we had to inquire about getting our money paid back. The homeowners have stayed past a well number of years. But the, what we do have in the agreement is if the homeowner, in the first-time homeowner program, sells the house before five years, it has to be paid back. The fee has to be paid back according to an amortization table. So I just wanted to make sure I had that on record. Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hoda wanted Scranton. That's good to know, because should that situation arise, get that money back, it could go to another family. And we were talking about saving the county money. Usually, the, the two options people look at are cutting costs and increasing revenue. But there's actually a third option, which is often overlooked, and that's eliminating fraud, waste, and abuse whenever possible. Now, Jeff Horvath wrote an article that was published on the 13th. County was scammed out of nearly $60,000, as you recall, the tent rentals from the winter event. Apparently, that, that loss was covered by insurance. But when something like this happens, and there are scammers out there, and no system is perfect, it is an opportunity to pause and take a look at what internal controls do we have that a situation like this does not recur? How did it happen that we paid a scammer? You know, what kind of documentation did the scammer have or not have? We, we need to take a look at, because, you know, we live in a technologically evolving society, and maybe 10, 20 years ago, it never would have happened. But, you know, it's a different society now, and maybe we need to periodically take a look at our internal controls. If there's a loophole, if there's a weakness, we need to cover it. We need to tighten it. We need to stop it. That's why I'm so adamant about the usefulness of a good audit, because a good auditor will do that for you. He will say, well, you didn't have a problem, and your money was not misappropriated, but you got a weakness here. You know, you need two people to sign a check. You know, you, you secure this, you deposit this by the end of the month. All kinds of little things. So I strongly recommend, because we have good people that work in the county, you know, but you've got very creative scammers out there, as everyone knows. So let's stop, take a look at the systems that you have. If there's a way to improve internal controls, go ahead. When the audit comes by, ask the auditor, what could we have done better? When the audit comes by, ask the auditor, what could we have done better? Because the next time, a loss might not be covered by the insurance carrier. So like I said, one of the ways of saving money, eliminate fraud, waste, and abuse. And this, this is an example of fraud. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Katrina Bowler, I'm from Jessup. At the last county commissioner meeting before the actual meeting started, the Lackawanna County Solicitor had an open mic, and he was talking about indecent, inappropriate previous employees. I believe you guys are all aware of it. It's been viewed over 4,000 times online. It's been shared to every media outlet. For some odd reason, something like this isn't hitting the news. It is just being swiped underneath the rug, kind of like when six females complain about a previous director. And I'm going to keep coming here until somebody looks into it. I went to your guys' rallies and meetings, and I introduced myself to you, to new commissioners, and I told you, I wasn't here to be a supporter. I was there to see you because you were my boss, and I wanted to see what you had to offer. And I listened to you. And I don't know how six females complain, how if you guys looked into anything that I have ever spoken about, if you actually looked into it, there is no way these people still have jobs. There's no way. There is no way. I don't know how you allow people to speak like this. We all, you put yourself here. You guys all put yourself here. You guys all put yourself in these jobs, and you should be held at a higher standard for that. And you really shouldn't condone that type of behavior by someone. No one should be allowed to talk like that. And when they do talk like that, and the fact that you have it re-edited and you just swipe it underneath the rug, that just proves me that in the last six months, you might be worried about our financial safety, but you're not worried about the actual safety of your employees or the residents of Lackawanna County. And I'm fierce. It takes a lot of courage to come up here, and I'm going to keep coming up here until someone does something, until someone looks into these complaints. I will file my right to knows as soon as I leave here, and then you guys could put the puzzle pieces together. I'm not up here embarrassing people. I'm not giving names. I'm giving job descriptions, and I'm asking you to look into it. It's very important that women should be allowed to vocalize when there's a concern and not have that brushed underneath the rug. And it keeps happening just because you went to school with the chief of staff or because they are friends with people in the baseball team. It is not fair. People should not be spoken to like that. And you guys created a fraternization policy. How can a woman, another woman go and make a complaint about a director when the other person that you would have to bring in the room that's a female, that's his wife? How does that happen? Look at me. Like, I am not trying to make you guys look bad. I support a lot of your decisions, but you need to look into this. No woman should be screamed at by the chief of staff on a phone because she didn't put a mark on flooding event in Scranton. I was. Bill Browning called me in his office. I got screamed at. I got told, Brian Jefferson sees red when you mention Paige, the mayor's name. I'm not worried about any of that. I was worried about the safety and the residents of Lackawanna County. And if you looked at these emails, I'll send them to you, somebody needs to look at what's going on up there. It's not fair. Then nothing is getting done. You guys said you were going to make a change, you were going to make a difference, and you are financially, but safety? What have you done? You got rid of me, and I was one of the biggest safety people in Lackawanna County. And I'm completely fine with that. I really am. But nobody should be allowed to get away with this, that type of behavior. Solicitor, a man that our tax dollars goes to, should not be allowed to talk about that. Chris said it, would have been all over the news, front page, everywhere. You three remind me of my children, three boys, they never get along. But you guys have to get along. It's not fair. 220,000 residents, and you guys can't even agree on the same color. How is that fair to us? I went out, I listened to you guys, I listened to your families, I watched you interact in the community, and nobody is looking into what is going wrong in this county. We're going to allow a man to talk like that? We're going to allow another man to put employees in a room and lock the door and point his finger at us and have HR dismiss it? Six women, come on. Look at it. You have a fraternization policy for a reason. You have HR for a reason. Nobody's doing anything. It's not fair.
Thank you.
So I will address the, that's okay, Tracy, it's okay. I will address the incident from the last meeting at South Abington Township where the mics were on prior to the meeting being started. There's a reason that we at the county don't publicly comment on personnel issues because obviously, they, they can, they can be graphic. The incident that Mr. Fredrickson was speaking about prior to that meeting happened before I even took office. So he was using it as an example. So again, I can't comment on it. I'll, I'll have to defer to Don on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, there was a conversation between myself and Commissioner McGloin with regard to personnel matter, and the part that was recorded, and, which was recorded unknowingly, by the way, and without consent of the parties under the Pennsylvania Wiretap Act is probably a violation of. But nonetheless, it was a conversation about a current personnel matter, and I was giving him an example at that point of a prior matter that was similar in relationship and what we had done with it. We did not know the microphones were on. It was prior to the meeting, and, you know, we're not going to comment any further because it is personal matter.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the, the board? Okay. Commissioners, other business, Commissioner McGloin.
Yes. So this past week, we had a wonderful coffee with the Commissioners event hosted by Dixon City with the surrounding boroughs of Archibald, Alphand, Blakely, Jessup, and Troop joining us. Again, it's such a wonderful thing. It's, it's a fantastic time being able to meet and speak with our local officials, ensuring that we all stay on the same page and that we continue to uphold our commitment to collaborate together and communicate with one another to ensure that, that our community continues to grow and continues to be the special place that it is. On June 29th, I'm excited to see that the Ritz Theater will have their grand opening. I was fortunate to tour it with Commissioner Gahan a few weeks back, and how far that, that building has come is extremely impressive and exciting. And I just want to give a special thanks to James Olecki for keeping that historic building lively within our community. And, and lastly, this past Sunday, had the chance to throw out the first pitch at the Field of Dreams baseball game, which took place at, at PNC Field. In fact, I'm trying to get the picture that when you threw it out not too long ago, because I want to compare it.
It was a strike.
I mean, it was a strike, okay? But really, a beautiful day on Father's Day there. The event brought out 42 high school baseball players from 19 out of the 24 schools in the Lackawanna County League. In the eight years of this event, we had our biggest turnout yet with 461 paid attendees. Proud to announce that all the proceeds from that game will benefit the Bill Howerton Strikeout Cancer Initiative. Additionally, a softball game will be held at the University of Scranton on June 30th with proceeds also supporting this important cause. And I just, real quick, as I'm sure everybody in this room knows, Rick Nateri sitting in the second row there, wouldn't have happened without him, without his hard work and commitment to it. So I just, I want to thank Rick really, really quickly on that. And then obviously, Mark, Mark Cordelli as well in the back there for, for helping with that as well. You guys are doing a fantastic job. Really appreciate all that, all that you've done. It's been, you know, I've known Mark for, for a little bit, and Rick, it's been, you know, been great working with both of you guys for the past six months. So thank you. Look forward to doing, doing a lot more great things as well for our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Shermack?
Thanks, Rick. Katrina, you know, I, I'm sorry, all that has happened over this last period of, I don't even know how many months, but you're, it's, you're a tremendous asset to the 911 Center and certainly to the Health Department. So I know you are missed by me, anyway. We have a lot to work on. Professionalism is, is key. I think we need to take a step back and, and look at that. On a good note, tonight, 4:00 PM at McDade Park, the, it's like kind of the summer kickoff for St. Joe's and the Go Joe Ride. It's going to be at the Pavilion One, which is like right behind our office when you first pull in. There's going to be a lot of things going on today, so from four to seven, it's going to be a little warm, but it should be a nice night. So if anybody out there is listening and like to stop by, we'd like to see you. Other than that, have a great day.
Thank you. We were excited to be able to announce last week that the County Redevelopment Authority hired Joe Moskowitz. Mr. Moskowitz is a longtime municipal planning expert. He was the city administrator in Pittston, who was instrumental along with Mayor Mike Lombardo in redeveloping downtown Pittston. Mr. Moskowitz is going to advise the Redevelopment Authority on how it can be a driving force in countywide and local planning and redevelopment projects. So we're really excited that he's come on board. As I said, his track record in Pittston is phenomenal, working with Mayor Lombardo, and he's full of ideas, and I think he's going to be a huge asset to county government. I had the opportunity last Saturday to attend the Bochi Tournament in Old Forge at our Carroll and Janelle. I never played Bochi before, and I didn't play on Saturday, I just watched. But I had the opportunity to present a proclamation to a gentleman named Al Lisby, and I just wanted to bring his name up because today is his actual 100th birthday. He is a World War II veteran, graduate of the Scranton Technical High School class of 1942. And as we were talking, he actually knew my great-grandfather, which is pretty interesting. But he, you know, talking to members of that generation, the greatest generation, it was the best 20 minutes I've had in a long time, talking to him and getting to know him a little bit. So I just wanted to wish him a happy birthday, and that's one of the, the great parts of this job, is that you get to go out and meet people like that. Our next meeting is going to be held July 3rd at 10:00 AM at the Archibald Borough Building. And that's all I have today. Hope everybody has a great rest of your week. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.